Good evening, Daytona Beach. And good evening to all. Welcome to the April 20th, 2022 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have each of you with us this evening. And this time, I would ask that Ms. LaMagna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing, and items of discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comments, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers, excuse me, speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment forum, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Warrantes reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse, obey any ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. LaMagna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Trager.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Present.
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Present.
Motion to excuse Commissioner May virtually.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Mayor, if I may, the motion would be to allow Commissioner May to attend virtually, of course.
Oh, yeah.
And Commissioner May, would you state the basis for your virtual attendance, and the board will need to, or the commissioner will need to make its finding based on exceptional circumstances?
Sure, I'm just making it for health reasons right now.
All right, very good.
I'm sorry, what did she say?
Health reasons.
Okay. We have, do you amend the motion? Based on health reasons, or?
The motion's fine, as I stated it, as long as you're agreeable to that language.
All right.
So it's simply to allow her attendance virtually. Commissioner May can be involved in all the conversations of the commission, and of course, can vote on matters.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries six, seven, six, zero. Well, would it be six or seven, zero?
It'd be seven.
Seven, she could vote on that, too. All right, just making sure. Motion carries seven, zero. At this time, we will have our invocation led by Commissioner Trager, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Henry.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, this wonderful day in Daytona Beach. And we ask for your blessing on our residents, our visitors, our first responders, our military. And please give us the patience and the wisdom to do for our city the best that we can do. Help us all, oh God. Amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the March 16th, 2022 regular city commission meeting.
So moved.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Trager. We'll take a second from Commissioner Henry. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero. This time, we will move on to agenda item number five, our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, add, there are some changes we want to add to item number eight, P. Donation of $250 to Imagine Daytona LLC, offset production costs of the inaugural Arts Daytona Beach Health Fest, held on April 9th through the 10th, 2022, from bike we sponsored funds for Commissioner May. Add addendum item number 10, D, the Orange Avenue Recreation Center Citizen Committee appointments to the administrative items. Thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda with the said changes.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed, and a second from Commissioner Trager. There are no further questions or comments. We'll have a vote. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries seven, zero.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, I will read into the record, under presentations, a proclamation from the city of Daytona Beach and myself. The, "In recognition of National Crime Victims Rights Week, whereas the Victims Rights Movement has recruited in the passage of laws at local, state, and federal levels that established essential rights for victims, and whereas in 1982, the President's Task Force on Victims of Crime envisioned a national commitment that would launch the Victims Rights Movement, inspire its progress, and advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas incorporating communities, existing experts, and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve survivors will develop a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. With the unwavering support of their communities and victim service providers behind them, survivors will be empowered to face their grief, loss, fear, anger, and hope without fear of judgment, and will feel understood, heard, and respected. And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the rights to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs, rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice and social service system. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime are offered appropriate trauma-informed services. And whereas the city of Daytona Beach is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for a better future for all victims and survivors. Now, therefore, I, Derrick L. Henry, Mayor of the city of Daytona Beach, and on behalf of the city commission, do proclaim April 24th through the 30th, 2022, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in the city of Daytona Beach, and reaffirm our city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victim Rights Week and throughout the year. And witness whereof I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Daytona Beach, Florida, to be affixed this 20th day of April 2022. Thank you."
Okay. We're going to move on to item number seven. This is citizens' comments. These are for people that are going to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. And our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. Couple of things. One, I have no idea on B what FIBRS is, and I wonder if we could have some clarification of what it does, because we always get shafted when we have reports on how bad our crime is and whatnot, because they deal with the number of people in the city, not with our tourists. So it always looks worse than it is. Is this going to hurt or help us? Secondly, C, the turf tank with the designs on, for football, soccer, baseball, et cetera. My question is, what took so long? $65,000 is not a lot of money, but if it saves us $65,000 a year, we should have done that years ago. D, they're redoing the bathrooms at Peabody. It needs to be done. There's always a line in the ladies' room. You go to any event, and they're out in the lobby because they can't get in. This will help that. I'm asking that you consider putting a black box in that room. We need a venue for, not everybody wants 2,500 seats. So if we could have a smaller venue for even movies, small kids' shows, things of that nature that won't draw 2,500, that will draw smaller crowds, a violinist, a whatever. Third, replace the pilings. Remember, I came last time, and we are apparently replacing pilings? And I'm told the pier is at its shelf life, so to speak. Could we possibly think of just replacing the wood with cement? That won't be going bad every, every year that we're having a replacement, replacement, replacement. This would be an item that we could go for an ECHO grant, even an ECHO super grant. And lastly, could you explain the opioid, the one number O? I know we were getting it. The county's talked about it, but there's no figures, no amounts. Over time, is it like a one-year thing? Is it 10-year thing? Exactly what's happening? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown.
Thank you, Frederick Brown, 1508 Kristen Ridge. In regards to item 8A, I'm going to use this again as an opportunity to promote electrical vehicles. And since this is going for police department surveillance units, it's an excellent opportunity because they're quiet, they don't make any noise, they can start right up, follow any of the bad guys faster than they can drive. So again, I want to emphasize, it would be nice to have that worked in our program as one of the key factors that the city is looking for when they get these bids. I also wanted to talk about item 8E, about the safe routes to school. And I know I've spoken to you about this before. FDOT, many of their programs are what I'm going to call somewhat experimental, not necessarily best based on the best data nationwide on their safety laws. But I really would like to see us push for the use of IRWL at crosswalks. That's in roadway warning lights. They work. And it's where the, where the driver's eyes need to be, which is down where the people are crossing. Again, this is something I wanted to talk about many times, as far as doing a proposal standardized within the city, so that we don't have any more deaths, as tragically has occurred in the past. Also, I want to thank the city for finally doing 8G. Underground wiring should be pretty much a requirement for anything, especially east of the river, due to the storm conditions. Constantly having a repair after every hurricane, major windstorm. Again, all those lines should be underground. The power company doesn't want to generally do it, because obviously, it's more money out of their profits, but again, in the long run, it pays for itself. So that's why we need to continue to expand programs. Again, I applaud the city for doing it on the international speedway projects, but I would love to see it expanded to cover other areas as well. And then I want to concur with a lot of the stuff that John just said, especially the Peabody. Glad to see it. Those are going to be some pretty amazing bathrooms at 567,000, so I'm looking forward to them. Thank you.
And those were my only two speakers for the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a motion?
I wanted to ask a question about the Peabody renovations. Are they going to use it kind of like, are they going to make the finishes kind of like historic, in keeping with the Peabody auditorium? And if, if not, could we request that?
She wants to know if they're going to make the renovations historic, or in keeping with the historic.
Oh, yeah, I think so. If Mr. Morris is in the back, would he come out at this time, please? We were both out, but it was important.
Yeah, it was important. Yeah, both of you holding the same, it mattered. Okay, I figured.
No, in the lobby with some citizens, actually, so. Commissioner Trager was asking a question with the renovations taking place in the restrooms. Are they going to, will they impede on the historic nature of the Peabody facility? Yes, sir. Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager, also manages Peabody. The answer is no, ma'am. They will not.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
And I have a question for item AF and IAI. If I could call Andy Holmes up.
Andy Holmes, Public Works.
Hi, Andy. I'm trying to find out the utility pools on the, for the sidewalks, will they be relocated or boxed in?
The, the goal is to relocate them all to the back of the walk. So either, either right behind the walk, or just in the edge, so that they don't impede any pedestrian use of the walkway.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Any additional questions? Do you all have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu, second from Commissioner Trager. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
I heard her.
At this time, I would ask that the chief come forward, so that we may take a picture to recognize the proclamation.
Chief, come stand right up. One, two, three, one, two.
And chief, I'll make sure that gets to your office, that proclamation. We are going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item number nine, A, is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, temporary Speedway Event Parking. This is a Land Development Code text amendment. This is a, we want to pull this one?
Yeah, yeah, we'll read it. Go ahead and read it, then we'll.
Okay, okay. Ordinance on second reading, public hearing, and ordinance amending section 5.4 of the city's land development code to add temporary Speedway Event Parking as a temporary use for properties within one mile of the Daytona Beach, excuse me, Daytona International Speedway PDG District boundary, subject to use specific standards, repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we are asking that this item be, agenda, and staff with the legal department and Development Services will be emerging on something else in reference to this particular item.
Okay. Does it require any further actions?
No further votes, just pulled.
All right.
Okay. That's okay. Okay, we're going to move on to 9B, and Kathy, I don't know what that says. So we're moving on to item 9B. It's a Finance Department Amendment to the Master Lease Agreement with Truist Bank for the purchase of public safety equipment, radios 2022. This is an emergency ordinance, public hearing, and emergency ordinance of the city commission of the city of Daytona Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution of Schedule of Property Number Three to the Master Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement with Truist Bank, sponsored by the Florida League of Cities, Inc., authorizing the lease purchase financing of the acquisition and installation of certain equipment herein described, authorizing the execution and delivery of an acquisition fund agreement, authorizing the execution of such other documents as may be necessary to complete the transactions completed hereby, and providing an effective date. So moved.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed, and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, no questions, comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
Moving on to item 9C. It's Development Administrative Services, changing the Code of Warrantes for Unaltered Animal Permits to establish an annual renewal requirement. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing, an ordinance amending section 1419 B2 of the city code to revise the unaltered animal permit by removing the lifetime issuance of unaltered animal permits and establish an annual renewal requirement, repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion? We have a second? There is no second? The motion dies, it will die for the lack of a second.
Well, let's just talk about this a little bit. How does this affect me and Weston?
Oh.
Weston's your dog, I presume?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
I missed the latter part of the question, Commissioner. I'm Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. How does it affect what?
Weston and our dog.
You guys are going to be just fine. This is a circumstance where the city passed an ordinance a while back, and there was a lifetime issuance of a permit for a purebred dog that it did not have to be altered. The general rule of law in the city is that if you have a dog and/or cat, but particularly dogs, that should be spayed or neutered if they are not effectively prized animals. What happened, and this was done in cooperation, the ordinance was passed in cooperation with some animal control and rights people that wanted to have it passed to reduce the cost of the city, and it actually has resulted in savings in the city with animal control. From a permitting perspective, attention wasn't paid downstairs to the ones that should have been issued the unaltered permits for life. So we're making a modification there, try and catch up with the errors that were made, have the licenses expire, and do an annual renewal. But in terms of your personal pet, I don't think it will have any impact on you one way or another. And it's something that was brought to us by the folks interested in animal rights. I worked with them to draft the changes in the ordinance, and they are happy with the change. And I would hope that you would have another opportunity for a second in the matter, so I could move forward.
So I don't need a permit for Weston? He can just live. All right.
Okay. All right, we have a speaker. Do we have a second for this motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. I was intending to be supportive of it personally, but I don't, I see some of my, my rights lovers in the building, and some who I have great respect for their opinion. Have you signed up to speak?
I have Pat Mahalik here.
That's who I expected. It's been a while, but you're still on the trail.
Hi.
Very good.
Hello, I'm Pat Mahalik. I'm here representing Concerned Citizens for Animal Welfare. I live at 216 Yorktown Drive in Daytona Beach, and been here for 40 years. So our organization was one of the key people who started the mandatory neuter and spay ordinance that you have on here. It's not for your, your regular pet owner. It's for breeders. And, and we're talking about backyard breeders. We're talking about people who are breeding animals for fights. We're talking about people who are making huge amounts of money off of people and illegally signing them. In fact, we have one right now that your animal control officers are investigating. It's a woman from Wild Olive who's selling Chihuahuas for $1,500 apiece, and she's forging the health certificates on them. She took up a, they got pet shots, $10 pet shots, and she altered the document, like as though the vet did it. So she's going to be under arrest, and she's got an operation that goes clear down to Palm Bay. So she's up here selling the, these dogs. So that's what this is, mainly for dogs, because most people aren't breeding cats, you know, to sell. So that's what the ordinance is for. And if it's people that are doing this, and they don't, they say they can't get their animal fixed, you can always send them to us. That's what we do. We offer, in fact, we've, we've made grants to the city, $5,000 grants twice to, for spay and neuter. So, and we also run your trap neuter return program for cats. So, so any questions?
Thank you so much for your service, because the downtown no longer has, Commissioner May, no longer has complaints about feral cats in the downtown area. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, for a long, long time, as long as I've been elected, I have trusted your judgment in these matters.
Thank you.
And I greatly value, when I saw you coming to door, both of you, I was, I already knew I was supporting it, but I knew if you were behind it. I firmly believe in, in your service. You haven't steered me wrong.
You've always helped us, so.
I appreciate you all also. Do we have a, anyone else, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Any other comments?
No, thanks.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 9D. It's Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Circle C Boat and RV Storage. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing, and ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 18.9 plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, northwest of the FPL, FPL Power Line easement, and 0.75 miles south of LPJ Boulevard intersection, from M3 General Industrial and SFR5 Single Family Residential 5 to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Circle Boat and RV, excuse me, Circle C Boat and RV Storage Plan District Agreement, authorizing development of a boat and RV storage facility to include enclosed storage units and outside storage, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Trager. Do we have any questions or comments, speakers?
I do have Joey Posey here, on behalf of the owner, for any questions.
Do we have any questions with Joey? No questions? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay. Agenda broke here. We are now going to move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item 10A is a city manager's office housing authority commission appointments resolution. A resolution appointing two members to the housing authority commission of the city of Daytona Beach, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report, and I do have a speaker.
You want to take the speaker first?
And our speaker is John, no, he's passing. Okay?
Okay. Good evening. This agenda item is to appoint two members to the housing authority commission. The terms of Hymnis Ivy and Kelvin Daniels have expired, and both would like to be reappointed. We also have an additional application from Sandra Murphy. These members are recommended by Mayor Henry.
Well, I'm excited tonight to nominate the current chairman for another term, Mr. Kelvin Daniels, as well as one of the great gadflies of Daytona Beach, and one who I think will add great depth and expertise to the board in Ms. Sandra Murphy. So I would request that, Murphy. Yeah.
Never heard of the term, Kate?
Well, you know what a gadfly is? A gadfly is exceptional. It's exceptional at stirring up and creating drama and greatness. It drives us to further.
Say so.
Do I need to?
She'll take that pride.
She should take it with pride. If I was out there, well, I'd be out on her side many times, being a gadfly with her. But at any rate, do I have a, a motion in a second to nominate these two?
Second.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Take a motion from Commissioner Reed, and a second from Commissioner Henry. All right, do we have any, yes?
I don't see anything.
I thought there were further comments. I thought there were further comments.
I'd like to say that I read Ms. Murphy's resume on her application. I was very favorably impressed.
Exceptional, to say the least. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. This motion carries seven zero. I'd also like to thank Mr. Ivy for, I believe, eight years of excellent service to this board, and this is one of the most important appointments in the city and one of the most important boards, and I look forward to you serving and helping to take it to another level.
I'd like to echo the mayor's comments and Commissioner Traeger's comments in regards to Sandy getting on this board. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move on to item ten B, City Manager's Office Leisure Services Department Master Plan Guidelines for Bike Week and Biketoberfest Boundary Expansion Resolution. A resolution amending the Bike Week and Biketoberfest Master Plan Guidelines to modify existing boundaries and extending the application deadline for Biketoberfest twenty twenty-two applications and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Motion from Commissioner May, second from Commissioner Traeger. Do we have speakers?
I do have speakers, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Patricia Hurd.
John Nicholson, four thirteen North Grandview Avenue. Some of you know that years ago, Olive Main Street was part of the master plan, and under one of our commissioners, they cut it off at Halifax. So now the area between Halifax and the river can no longer do all of the things that the rest of the street can do. I'm asking if you're gonna expand it in this direction, that we also look at that one block to be included in the rest of all of the permissions for the rest of Main Street. And secondly, does this increase the amount of space tenfold from what is now existing on MMB? Because what you've done is, you've included the college, Bethune-Cookman College. That includes all of the space from ISB and Mason Avenue, because they have all of that space. So when you open it up to those on this thoroughfare, their entire property has to be included, because you don't do, like on Main Street, you don't do just the front of the building. You do the entire property. Likewise, they would be entitled for all of that property from one end to the other, and I'm not quite sure that's exactly what you're looking for. So would you clarify that, please? Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Patricia H. Hurd, eight two two Vernon Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm just going to take a few minutes of the time this afternoon to just personally, I'd like to thank the deputy city manager, Mr. Jim Morris and his department for the meeting that we held, that was held a couple of weeks ago regarding Biketoberfest. It was very fruitful to the business and property owners on Dr. Martin Luther Kane Boulevard and Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard. They really listened and received helpful information that has not been shared with them before. Thanks again if you need my assistance.
And those were my only two speakers for this item?
Mayor Commissioner Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. I think Mr. Nicholson brought up a good point in respect to the college. Intention is to permit the university to participate, but certainly not the breadth of the body of the campus. So what I suggest that you should do is allow staff some leeway to work with the campus to see what depth they think would be appropriate as a part of their frontage on MMB and work with it that way. I'm thinking probably two hundred feet or so, if that's what they thought was appropriate. We didn't try to say where the college should do it, but the college did participate this past year, and the intention in the move on MMB is to be inclusive, allow everybody that has the opportunity in terms of property to have the opportunity to participate. There's never an intention to have it run the breadth of the campus body itself. I know the map depicts it that way from the standpoint of what's shown there. The intention was just to deal with the MMB frontage. I would say too, then in respect to the map on the eastern side of MMB, there's an error in the exhibit that would show the area running all the way down to Beach Street for the expansion. The intention on MMB is simply to take the two streets, here's the corrective map, that just a little bit of frontage there on US one, just the two businesses that are the corner of one and MMB on the east side of US one. So one business is active, it's a gas station convenience store. The other one is currently vacant. It opened for a little bit as a seafood shop and then it closed back down. So just the intention there would be those two shops to be included if the commission decides. None of this is something that the commission is compelled to do, but from a fairness perspective and including the community, that's why it was proposed. And then the object, though, is to let the commission have debate and determine what it thinks should be done, but it was never intended to take the property all the way down basically to Palmetto on MMB. On the south side, you have the Votran Terminal there. On the north side, it's residential, once you get past, little gas store and store on the other side. That is one modification that needs to be made. That was actually brought to my attention today when Commissioner May was asking a question about that map. Otherwise, I appreciate Ms. Hurd's comments. We did have good participation from the community.
Roughly sixty people were in it.
Roughly sixty people. Mr. Nicholson asked, is this ten times the area? I think probably the frontage is about double of what it was. It kinda goes back to some other plans that were used, and the Whites and Ms. Hawkins did ask for a slight expansion towards Fulton Street, looked at that, didn't have a concern with that if the commission is comfortable with it. One thing I thought about there was that it's opposite some of the housing from the old Pine Haven projects, but it's something that the belief is the community would probably be happy to have activity there during that time period, so. And it's really an opportunity for folks to test the waters and see what they are able to do, and hopefully make Bike Week on MMB a more active thing than it has been.
Mr. Morris, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
If I might. Are you suggesting we continue this to the next meeting?
Absolutely not, no. We've got, no, we've got deadlines. There's a second item in this in terms of the application time period, so we can work with the college in terms of the depth they need. It won't be something that's hard to decide.
You know, obviously, we need to have that restriction in this resolution.
Yes, sir. Then let's place it at three hundred feet and allow us to reduce it, and then we will.
Well, we'll.
I think three hundred is more than ample.
We'll make it three hundred feet, you know, subject to the commission's approval, and we can always bring it back and reduce it if necessary through amendment.
And the second part of this is, this does extend the deadline for application for Biketoberfest activities, because twentieth, when we had the workshop, was actually the deadline for filing, and the people at the workshop are aware there would be a later date if the commission grants this, and it is important in respect to the application deadline that that be approved so people have an opportunity to file.
And that is the deadline that's shown.
Stated there, yes, it is.
Currently. Okay, very good. So the changes to the, to what's presented would be the three hundred feet for the college on MMB and also the map correction.
The map change, which was an error in the map, it wasn't an error in the discussion.
Okay, very good. If the motion would include those changes, that would be appropriate.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner May, you tried before.
Thank you so much. The businesses, the gas station on the corner, as well as the car business on the other corner, are they aware that they're now included?
We published this on the street as well as during, Biketoberfest went to vendors, I can leave the camera instead of, it's Stevie. We published it on the street and then also gave notice to property owners, so they have the opportunity to know whether they actually know, I don't know, but we certainly did everything we could to let the public know, and I think that's why we had such a good turnout. Room one forty-nine was full on the night of the workshop, and people stayed, I would say, the full crowd was there for eighty-five percent of the time.
Thank you, I was there. I appreciated the fact that we're all, and I just wanna say it publicly, that we're considering MLK as well in the future. It was a topic of conversation that I appreciated, extending it a little bit down that corridor also. I thought that was a nice conversation. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, I know Bethune-Cookman has participated in the last couple of years, and they've used what was the alumni house for RV parking. Is that, is that within that three hundred feet?
It, I actually need to confirm it, and that's why I was asking for some leeway in doing that, and I picked three hundred feet. RV parking has been something that's done somewhat apart from the master plan.
Okay.
My, the intention here is to not take anything away from anyone, let them do what they've been doing, to a certain extent, some of it's ratification of things that weren't authorized before, and then make it just work better for the community, so we'll get to that right away. With three hundred feet, I'll touch base with the university. As the deadline is adopted, I can work with the university to modify as needed to meet their specific needs, and if need be, on that point, come back to the commission to change that. That's, I don't have a problem with doing it, it's just the timing of doing it.
All right, I have another question. So this allows all of these business owners now to be able to file and be a part of this?
Yes, ma'am.
Does this now take away from SAMA? Is that in the game now?
Well, so the SAMA situation was one that SAMA presented itself as a public property proposition. We still have that, but the bottom line is, and I know you know from being there, that the sidewalks actually didn't accommodate much of the use. And SAMA actually would get permits and then rent property from private property owners and use the private property, so what was being done when we saw it was inconsistent with what was anticipated by the commission and by the staff, and I think Ms. Askew wasn't aware of it, I certainly wasn't aware of it, and on the day that that was discovered was when we started the move here to open the door for everybody to have a fair chance to do what they wanted to do and not effectively see SAMA as the only way to get to be able to participate. There were private property owners that did not understand, they didn't understand at the hearing, at the workshop either, that they individually could apply, and from an expense standpoint, actually less to them, they thought the city was receiving more money because of SAMA than it was. The fees that we charge were about three hundred bucks, I think is what it is, and we've got a reduced rate on MMB. It's simply the city rate and whatever else the people make, it's their money to do what they wish to do.
Okay, very good. I'm pleased with the extension. I think it's, it's just too crowded right now. It's too congested, and this gives other business owners an opportunity to partake in this activity as well.
That was the driving force in what we're proposing, was to give more opportunity and to be inclusive of the community too. I could see no reason to sever at the tracks and say from there to US one, it's not there. That, I've seen it, I didn't understand it, and we had a chance to bring it to y'all to consider a change, so we did.
Well, speaking of new business owners, we have the Joneses here who have purchased the Campbell Hotel right there on that front row, and so they're excited about being able to participate in this as well. Welcome.
If I might, for those particular property owners, you have an old sign, would love to work with you to keep that in place. It's a gorgeous sign.
We've already committed to that.
Good. I looked at it on our walk, our neighborhood walks, I thought this sign should be the way it is.
Should be the way it is.
Be the way it is, in other words, same form and, not sprayed over and so on, but just hanging over the side and so on. It looks great.
We've.
I will. You hadn't called me, I'll get back to you.
We've committed to restore it.
Good. It should be done.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good job, Commissioner. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Nice job.
Certainly, thank you.
Nice job, Commissioner, on that sign. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, any other, more speakers? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, the same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We'll move on to item ten C, which is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division. First Amendment to the Capital Recovery Agreement for the traffic signal at Grand Champion Boulevard and US ninety-two. Resolution. A resolution approving the first amendment to the Capital Recovery Agreement between the city and Lennar Homes LLC, creating standards for the completion of the traffic signal to be constructed at the intersection of Grand Champion Boulevard and US ninety-two and clarifying cost recovery standard, providing for the city manager to approve certain future amendments to the Capital Recovery Agreement, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the amendment to the agreement, waiving enforcement of certain requirements of the integrated LPGA Plan District Agreement subject to conditions and providing an effective date. So moved. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Henry.
Mayor, there were some last minute changes to this, which Attorney Gow is here to discuss with you.
Okay.
Good evening, Jessica Gow called, one four nine South Ridged Avenue. We noticed in the agreement that the schedule had a few dates actually in there, one references September, one references December. So for the purposes of the resolution and the amendment, we just wanna make it clear that the December, I think we're gonna go with thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, is the drop dead date for the purpose of the amendment, and just to say, we dropped off the original performance bond with the city this evening, so the money is in place.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two is the deadline for completion of construction for the signal?
Correct, that's the estimated final inspection date.
All right, do we have any other questions or comments?
And I have no other speakers.
And again, your motion will reflect that change.
All right, all right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Question, motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We're gonna move on to item ten D, which was added to our agenda tonight. It's the City Manager's Office, Orange Avenue Recreation Center Citizen Committee Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing seven members to the Orange Avenue Recreation Center Committee for a term ending August third, twenty twenty-two, and providing an effective date. So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Reed, Mr. Manager.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, wanted to provide some feedback as we move forward with this appointment. Wanted to state for the record, since maybe all of the individuals did not receive the list, on April sixth, the commissioners agreed to appoint a citizens committee for the purpose of determining the use of the facility and historic designation of the Orange Avenue Recreation Center. The mayor in each zone commissioner proposed to appoint the following citizens to this committee. The appointments are Mayor Henry and Ruby, Commissioner Cantu, Pierre Lewis, Commissioner Traeger, Bill Chapin, Commissioner Reed, Percy Williamson, Commissioner May, Kenneth Hunt, Commissioner Strickland, Stephen Powell, Commissioner Henry, Evan Smith. These members will make up the committee if there is a vote tonight to confirm these appointments. I have decided to have a city liaison after speaking with Mr. Morris and Mr. Mozak. We have selected Paula M. Long to serve as the city manager's liaison to the committee who will bring back information and be able to respond appropriately to questions. Ms. Long serves as a planner in Development Services. She has a twenty-four years, she has twenty-four years of progressive real estate experience inclusive of asset management, acquisition and dispositions, commercial and residential property management. Paula has served as the liaison for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, facilitated the annual fair housing with Mid-Florida Housing Partnership, and worked with the planning and visioning team for process improvements and development services. I will, along with City Attorney Jagger, our committee liaison, Paula Long, we will hold an organizational meeting to select, for the committee to select a committee chair, a vice chair, secretary, and lay out the rules relative to the Florida Sunshine Law, since this group will be under the Florida Sunshine Law. Right now, we have potential organizational meeting dates of May ninth or eleventh at five thirty PM in room fourteen, room one forty-nine, but that will come after we speak with, an email goes out to all of the board members, because it may be pushed back depending on the committee members here. During that meeting, we will discuss some of the opportunities for the roles. Stephen Bapp, who is also the senior planner, historic preservation planner, will be a backup to Ms. Long as the liaison. There will be opportunities for both Ms. Long and Mr. Bapp to participate in discussions, as well as we will make available the city's consultant that deals with our grants to be available, and other staff members. The goal is that we don't have seven or eight members trying to talk to twenty different staff members, that our liaison, Paula Long, will bring back the information to me and I will disperse it out to our staff members to get the information back to the committee, because we'll find ourselves having ten emails going out and committee members, different committee members, so they will be the liaisons. Paula Long is a very diligent, succinct individual in the planning department. What I like about it, she has a very calm demeanor, and she gets the work done. And so when you've got me, Mr. Morris, and Dennis all at the same time going, Paula Long is the one, I say, I think we've done a great job. I've talked to many of the individuals, so we'll go through all of the stuff that, in regards to the process within the resolution, the deadline given, do you recall that, Bob?
It was the first meeting in August, August second, I believe.
Okay. Ending August third, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
And if there is a necessity, because Mayor, you all stated ninety days, if it's, it needs to be longer, we'll bring something back to you all, but our goal is to have a report and be available and make ourselves available to the committee to bring something back to you all.
Okay, thank you.
And if there is a necessity, because Mayor, you all stated 90 days, if it's, it needs to be longer, we'll bring something back to you all. But our goal is to have a report and be available and make ourselves available to the committee to bring something back to you all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we, and first of all, I'd like to commend you all on diverse and great group. Very happy to see Stephen, a young man nominated for this committee. And just the overall group, I think couldn't be a better list of names from what I heard. I think each one of you did an outstanding job with your selection. Do we have any other questions or comments about this important task? All right, do we have a motion for the slate?
So moved.
Oh, we had a motion. Traeger and Reed, okay, my bad. Thank you for making the motion. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
And we will notify the committee and do a survey monkey to try to see what's the appropriate date for the organizational meeting. And as well, since they are now appointed board members, I will also make the facility available for them if they want to, to go into the facility, because they are official board members that you have appointed.
And Mayor, I should also mention that the board members should not discuss any matter which may come before them. Those matters need to be discussed at the public meetings. They now are subject to the sunshine law.
We'll send them an email first thing in the morning.
Okay, all right, thank you again.
Okay, and that was our final item on the agenda.
All right, well, we started tonight with Commissioner Reed on roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll wait.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen of Daytona Beach, visitors and guests, it gives me great pleasure to tell you that the Second Annual Seafood Festival is coming your way. April 30th, from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Join us on Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, where we will experience delights from all across the state and out of the state. Seafood, mm, can't you taste it? Shrimp, little shrimpies, lobsters, scallops, crabs, mm. We recognize that some folks will not be able to eat seafood, there may be some shellfish allergies and what have you, so there will be others there that will not be serving seafood. We recognize that we have citizens who have small businesses that may want to sell their wares. And we have gotten permission from two of our citizens to utilize their parking area for those citizens. So for a hundred dollar registration fee, you may come with your items that you sold during the Holiday Bazaar. And if you weren't a part of the Holiday Bazaar, you can still join us and sell your wares. And you too may be there from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Yes. It's the Daytona Beach Seafood Festival, coming your way. We are excited about showcasing the businesses that are currently open on Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard. Because when we don't have a seafood festival, we want you to still go to Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard and support the businesses that are there. Get ready, get ready, get ready. Come comfortable, so that your clothes may expand.
I hope that we didn't pay for this advertisement. I think we paid for something.
Brittany Presley, who did this for us once before with design, what is it? Divine Designs is gathering up all of our vendors. The city has jumped full, full force, I mean all feet. I had a flyer on my house today, I was like, I'm part of this thing. But I said, okay, we're getting the word out. We are on the radio, we are advertising in all means of media that we can. We're going to have JoJo from 94.5, we've got 94.1, we've got 90, the gospel station, 106.4.
See, you don't listen to gospel.
Not on the radio. I have, I have Siri. And, yeah, serious. But anyhow, you're looking for something to do. We've got something for you. And if you like seafood, we also have a Kid Zone that's sponsored by ViStar. So we have items for children to do for a designated time period from 12 to 5. And that's going to be staffed by none other than the Divine Nine of the Daytona Beach area. So come on out, folks. It's for everybody. Just because it's on Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard does not mean it's not for you. We want to see everybody there to partake and participate and just have a good old time. I look forward to seeing each and every one of you there. Seafood Festival, April 30th, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Be there or be square.
Can we tell we have a communications expert on staff? A communications professor, yes. Commissioner Traeger, good job.
I had a question from constituent. She, excuse me, she lives above a business on A1A. She wanted to have a garage sale. She was told because she lives above a commercial building that she could not have a garage sale. I told her I would ask about it tonight.
Probably wouldn't really need to get the address and see the zoning, but he...
Yeah, I couldn't.
If you wouldn't mind, you can call me and text me the address tomorrow.
Give you an answer right away. I don't know the answer at this moment. But I will get it for you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Other than that, good evening, everybody.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Strickland?
Where are we in the process of setting up a way to distribute the doorbell cameras?
We will be bringing something back to you all at the next meeting. I'm going to get with Drew, that was another item that was discussed by a commissioner to see where we are with that process, because we have to work with our police department. So we'll have an answer, and if it's not by next meeting, we'll send a memo in the next...
Thank you. No further comments.
Yes, sir. Commissioner May?
Hello. So I had a couple of questions from residents regarding interconnected bike paths. Do we have anything like that in Daytona Beach? Because oftentimes, you go over the bridge, Veterans Bridge, the bike path kind of ends, or it seems like it kind of really narrows. Or sometimes you go to some major intersections and you turn right or left and there's nothing there. So do we have a map of some sort to give to residents? I do have some residents who that's how they, they travel. Do we have anything like that?
I think Andy's coming up.
Also, I will tell you, I've noticed that on Peninsula, the bike path stencil is very clearly defined. And I'm wondering, I know that's, can we do anything more like that to clearly define where the bike path lanes are or exist?
All good questions. Andy Holmes, Public Works. Our office will put together that map and have it in the next couple of weeks.
That's fantastic. But don't go, sir. I want to say thank you for something else. You've been doing some really fantastic work in Zone 3, and the residents appreciate it. I don't know how to say, just thank you so much. You know, I sent an email and it's responded to efficiently, so I appreciate that. One thing that I would like to mention, which, the Dog Park at Lenox Park, thank you. All the dog lovers there are extremely happy with it, and we look to see what else is going to happen in that area. So thank you again for that.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that on to the people actually doing the work.
Good job, Andy.
And then also, I wanted to, I wanted to address something. Ms. Ponix is doing a great job responding to some bits of information being questioned. And that would be, get ready for it, the odor at Bethune Point. So I have residents in that area that have a series of apartment complexes, townhomes. I have boat owners as well who live in that area, and I have permanent residence houses there. And sometimes the odor from the Bethune Point area, it's not great, but I love that we're addressing it. So thank you so much to kind of looking into it and seeing what else we can do with that, it's appreciated. Dealing with the water. Attorney Jagger, I sent you some information, we discussed it earlier. I like the fact that the residents are being very responsive. I will say to them, look, you live here, tell me what you need and tell me how I can help you, and they will help with the research. And again, it's wonderful. So I sent you some information about how we can become more, I don't want to say strict. The word is more able to enforce the laws that we have as relates to derelict boats on the water. And to that, I want to add that if we are taking a look at a fire vessel, there's something we need to consider. And I'm going to just read something to you. We need to consider whether or not that fire vessel can also help us with towing, with pumping out diesel, with helping when something is sinking. Can that fire vessel be used in more than one way to help with the boats that are abandoned? So will we be looking into that? I sent you some information, documentation, some other places that are doing it, along with what the legislation was on it. Hello?
Commissioner May, would you like me to share that information with the rest of the commission?
I would love it, thank you.
I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, and then also, I did speak with the city manager about a program called Complete Streets. My goal is still Ridgewood. I'm still looking to see what we can do to improve that corridor. And then there are some other streets that could use some TLC. So I'm hoping that we can send some information to the commission about that. I have some research I've done on it as well, and I would love to share that with you. Also, I'd like to know what is going on with the Orange Crush concept? There's an event that's supposed to be taking place, taking place for artwork with that. I have residents on beachside who would like more information about it, and they're a little concerned.
The information that we are receiving is the same that everyone is receiving on social media platforms, saying they're coming here. However, if you follow the police department's information in their media releases, it has them also going to Savannah, Georgia, and Jacksonville. So we are in the situation of trying to deal with pop-up events. Chief Young has put all of his officers on standby from a standpoint of being ready to serve the community if there is a lot of group that comes in. But right now, we're receiving the same information off of social media platforms, denoting that they may be in Daytona Beach or in Savannah, Georgia. So we will continue to monitor that, and we put out, I think Public Works is on standby, as well as putting out barricades if necessary for communities and neighborhoods if that group does decide to pop up here in Daytona Beach.
Okay, I've got two weeks, two points left. Are we making any progress on our electric vehicle research? Or electric charging station research? I think I brought that up a few weeks back, and I had a resident send a very complete report. I thought we were trying to work with the resident on beachside to find out, is this something that is of interest to us? You know, what we can do about it? Where are we on that?
Mr. Stallworth is meeting with the gentleman.
Okay, super. And then at the very end of this, we had a fantastic festival downtown. It was an arts, arts, crafts, music, entertainment, live art performance event, lasted for two days. I would like to know if we could possibly show maybe a three-minute footage of it. It shows events that took place Friday, kind of setting up Saturday. We had an event on Magnolia Saturday evening, and then we also had some things going on Sunday. Is it possible to show a very short clip of it? It was the first time we actually had events.
We are on the move as artists in the community, and we want the world to know that ours is welcome and a home in Daytona Beach.
I love the location, the streets are amazing, the vendors are great. Such an amazing turnout for this event. I love Beach Street, I love seeing all these locals come out and support shops and different restaurants and stuff, and it's super cool to be a part of the community.
There he is, Bruno!
You can own one of these pieces of artwork, I can't wait to see them all.
It's just been an incredible day. The community has come out, and we have really supported the local artists. Let's make this like an event of the year. This is an amazing festival. This was an enormous success.
So for, I'm not sure if you heard volume, but for a first-time event, I thought it was really well attended and very well produced. I would love to see events like that on MMB, like the Seafood Festival and MLK. I would like to see more of that happening all around town. Thank you so much, and thanks for the indulgence.
And thank you, and Ms. Lieberman is here tonight, and, uh... Sure, Ms. Lieberman is here, and she is the wheel behind the process of this event. I would also like to know if we have permission to show that video on 1099? I think it's appropriate for just promotional purposes of things that take place in Daytona Beach. Is that okay? Okay, thank you. It was a fantastic festival, and you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you for your support.
And thank you. Did you want to come up for a moment and say any word or...? Not expecting that, were you?
Just thank you for your...
Moving on, Commissioner Cantu?
Yes, I would just like to tell you thank you. The residents of Pelican Bay were very pleased that you came out there for the meeting. That was a very intense meeting, so I thank you. And I couldn't be at two places at once. So I also had a meeting the same night at Grand Champion. And a few of the residents were very vocal about some of the vacant lots. The sidewalks were never finished in there, and some of ADA compliance as well. And I would like to call Andy up, and I did speak to Mr. Fiecher regarding this. And we do have some money in our sidewalk funds to finish this, and I believe you went out there today, am I correct?
Andy Holmes, Public Works. I did take a ride out there, also sent one of our staff members out there that kind of works with the sidewalk program. There are some areas out there that are a good idea to improve, and there are some things that we just have to fix out there. And so we are identifying the costs of that, and we're going to present a plan to the city manager for his, his review, of course, before we do the work, but there are some things that we can do out there to improve things.
Would the majority of them be from homes that have not been built because of the process of how...
The main, yeah, the main part of the, as you know, in the past, our, our process was that the sidewalks never got constructed until the lot was developed, and that was so that the sidewalk didn't get destroyed when the lot was developed. And that's changed now, and there's, thanks to this commission, there's, there's been some changes to that process that ensures that the sidewalks will get constructed in their entirety. But in that, the case of that subdivision was developed over a decade ago, the infrastructure was, that wasn't in place. And so there are some gaps. There's not a lot of gaps out there. It's not, it's not going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars or anything like that. There's a few vacant lots, and there's some areas where the sidewalks just stop short of being completed in some of the common areas.
And I believe the developer that originally did that neighborhood or whatever, built that neighborhood, he actually went bankrupt or something?
I think at the end, and that's why that signal has been an issue out there that never got constructed either. That signal on 92, that we now have another developer that's going to be taking over that project, so... Yeah, that, that was part of the issue, I believe. I wasn't here when it happened, but that's what makes sense.
And I did find out today, some of those homes were built around 2014, 2015 as well. So I, I mean, there's not many, correct?
Right, there's not, there's not very many gaps in the sidewalk there. That's not, you know, really the major issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henry?
Just three quick things, and that is, the first question is, how far are we along with the school board approval for the ARPA funds? Because we were waiting for them to be able to give the funds to the schools. And had to be approved, or a certain way it had to be set up?
I actually think we were giving some of the funds out of Drew is in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we actually have given out some of the funds.
Give you, Drew Drew School Deputy, City Manager, Fire Chief. Yes, we did Champions Elementary, and, but the other ones you brought up, no movement has been made on that yet.
Is there reasoning why? Because she's, that's going to be her next question.
Yeah, the reasoning why is my roster of activities, to be honest with you. It is on my list, and as we discussed, to reach out to the individual principals. We do know now that we could have individual agreements with the schools, and then they will issue out the funds as we discussed during the meeting.
Okay.
It will happen, I promise.
Just have librarians calling me, so if we could get that.
Judging from the eyeballs I just received, it is happening very shortly. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Zone 5 looks awesome. We have quite a few streets that have been paved already, and we're getting lots of compliments, and we have quite a few new sidewalks that have gone in, and some ADA-compliant sidewalks. So, I just want to say fantastic job with that.
I'd like to see how you work. He keeps uttering your $4 million.
Glad to see that $4 million is being put in Zone 5. And my last question is, the speed bumps that came up for those projects, will those go back down, or what's the process?
So, we do have a process in play where if there's, we're looking at roads, if it meets the policy, wherever the speed, how many vehicles are speeding, we will put them back. So, if there are streets that you think we need to evaluate, we do have a process, and we do have machines. We have a bunch of people that don't want speed bumps, and we have a bunch that do want speed bumps. So, give me the streets, Andy will hear, and we'll go set up the, I almost said Speed Trap, but the machine to determine Pelican Bay wants speed traps. We will, we will put up the machine to determine how many people are speeding in that neighborhood and determine where we need to put speed bumps.
Some of them just went down just within the past two to three months. Some of those speed bumps that I've been kind of fighting for for the past couple years just went down two to three months. I'm going to need those replaced.
Yeah, I know how it is.
Yeah, it's especially over on Essex Road, that has been four or five accidents where cars have gone into houses and gates, and people have been hit, cars have been hit, I think a child was hit, and so, I'd like to see those ones on Essex put back most expeditiously. And that's my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you begin, on that note, would you add Maile? My bumps on Maile were removed, and I've got a son calling me from up north because of his elderly mother. We fixed a sidewalk for her because of the wheelchair, but the speed bumps.
I'm going to add to that. I've been, I'm going to add to that. I've been contacted by, I've been corresponding with the city for two to three weeks now.
They asked for them.
The residents there very much want the speed bumps back, but were removed, and the signs are still up, which they want the signs there because they want the speed bumps back. So, that is, Phoenix is a priority for us also. Thank you.
Let me say this, and I understand there is always contention about speed bumps. When I was a Commissioner, the number-one issue was always speed bumps, traffic, road paving, but speed bumps were the thing that people asked for the most. And so, I would concur with my colleagues by saying that if it was a speed bump already there, for the most part, we need to try to put it back.
Thank you.
I had a lady who sold me sherbets as a kid. You know who the sherbet is? She sold me sherbets as a kid, and she, she loved me as a teenager, and she voted for me as an adult, but I put a speed bump in front of her house. And she didn't speak to me for four years. But after four years went by, she's now baking me, she was baking me cakes. So, you know, things have an ebb and they have a flow. She came back to realize, you know, that, you know, I went with the majority. And so, speed bumps will win you some, and they'll lose you some, but you got, we have to do what is in, what's going to create the safest environment for the majority, and they are contentious, but just stay on top of them.
I have a question, so Andy won't throw tomatoes at me. Putting them back at the current location, because I, I'll just, we get a call every day, not only from Commissioners, and we have a policy. So, are we saying that whenever someone calls, put them back, or just?
No, put them back, the ones that are already in place. We have a policy, we know we have a procedure that we go through, but those were put there for a reason, and were there, and, you know, they probably need to go back. But if, you know, we know we have a policy, and that helps us. We can't just run around putting a speed bump every time someone calls. But we, so the policy does help, and I appreciate having you. Okay.
Because the policy, right, is 50%. What is the number of residents? Do we still do that, where we ask the, survey the residents, and ask them, and a certain percent has to agree to it?
He's exercising today. He can't say he needs to sit in the front row today.
It won't take long. Andy Holmes, Public Works, thanks for asking. The process for getting a speed hump installed is, the request is made, and that can come from a Commissioner, it can come from a resident, it can come from the police or whoever. We go out and we measure the speed of the drivers and the volume of traffic over generally a 48-hour period of time, but in some cases, we'll do it as long as a week, so we get every day of the week. That's what we did on Phoenix most recently. And we determine if a speed hump is warranted, because a speed hump's a traffic control device, and there's a plus and minus to every traffic control device. You can cause as much harm or more as good if it's unwarranted. So, they, there are cases where you can cause an accident, they're not very friendly to motorcycles, we have a lot of motorcycle traffic. So, we try to evaluate whether it's warranted first. If the traffic flow indicates that there is some justification for putting a speed hump there, and we have criteria that are national criteria for that, then we do the resident survey, which is what you originally asked about, and what we like to see is 51% yeses come back. We mail the survey, we give the residents 30 days, at the end of 30 days, we tally it, tally it up. If we got 51% responses of the affected houses that said yes, then the speed hump goes forward. If we got less than 51%, then generally, what the policy says is we don't install a speed hump. That enables us to kind of gauge the support for it, because there are an awful lot of people that don't want speed bumps, too. So, that's what the policy says now.
Can I ask a question? Is that the policy as it relates to, to when we redo streets? Because this was a street redo, it was there, it was removed, and so, we don't put things back? Or is when you get your street redone, that's the opportunity to take the survey? Is that how it works?
What we do in the case of a, over time, demographics in a neighborhood change, driving habits change, sometimes the population gets a little older and wiser and doesn't drive as recklessly. And so, we take that opportunity to review, we do a new study, evaluate, because again, there's negatives to speed bumps. We get complaints about vehicle damage and all of that, too. So, we take that opportunity to redo the study, essentially go through the process again, take a new vote if it is still warranted. Often, they are not warranted. The speed hump worked, it changed driver habits, and then the speeding isn't occurring on the, on the new study. And so, at that point, we don't put the speed hump back in. That's what the policy says now. But we're going to do what the Commission wants us to do.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that's valuable, and that's understandable, if it's, but when they start complaining and calling about them, you know, just give it back to them for the most part. That's my policy. Okay, this Orange Crush business, you know, in South Florida, and I just want us to think about these things. And these are tools that we, they may be extreme, but if it, if things cause a problem in our community, and we have to have a curfew, you know, I don't know what Orange Crush is going to bring, I don't know what other things will bring in the future, but I just want us to understand that if people invade our city and they cause mayhem, I will be of the mindset, if necessary, that we call for a emergency curfew, because you're not going to come to Daytona Beach and just run shot over our beach and drive our residents to anger and hostility and frustration because you want to invade our community. So, I do want us as a Commission to know that that is a tool that may be at our disposal in the future. I don't anticipate that that will be the case this weekend. I will be speaking with the city attorney and our manager in the coming week or so to know what is necessary, if necessary, for me as it relates to state of emergencies and things of that nature, to be able to implement that, or if it requires us to come together. Whatever the requirement is, I just want us to be mindful of the fact that we have to be strong advocates, that we're going to do whatever we have to do to make sure that truck events and other events don't run shot over our community. So, I will probably meet with the two of them and just make sure we come back and are able to talk about that and some of the options going forward, and how we will execute anything, and all of the strategies that the chief has as it relates to the new law. We just want all of us to be informed about what's in our tool belt as a Commission to make sure that we are, we're handling our business, because we know we have some folks who, who mean to do what they want to do, and we mean to do what we have to do. First Step Shelter, I mean, this is pretty much all I'm going to talk about. Things, I think, are going exceptionally well. You saw an article in the newspaper, I think, recently, that highlighted many of the successes of the shelter. Finally, I think, moving past a lot of the challenges that we've had over the years. People are starting to understand that it, the reason that the name is First Step is that it is a step towards progressing out of homelessness. It's never was intended to be a place for people to come and shower and be reinforced in their status as a homeless person. And we understand that people have a right to be homeless, but the first step is for graduating people, and we have to remember that. The shelter's been open, I think, just a little over two years, and we need to remember that over 200 people, and I'll say that again, over 200 people. And this year, we're on track to break the record that we had last year of 104 people. But over 200 people in two years have moved from a condition of homelessness to permanent housing. And over 95% of them, almost 99% of them, are still in permanent housing, with only a few of them having died. I appreciate that, I think that's, that is worthy of a clap. I think that it's important for us to know that all of this has allowed us to start thinking about strategic growth for the shelter. I know people thought that when the shelter opened, it was how, big enough for 100 people. So, you thought it should have opened, and first they had 100 people. You don't open that way. You open and you build to capacity so that you can scale up to what you can handle. So, we've learned a lot over the last two years. I would say you all remember that we started out with Catholic Charities, we started out with Mark jealous as our executive director. Well, Catholic Charities is gone, we got a new executive director. We started out, when we opened, the goal was 40 people, 45 people, went to 50 people. Today, we have 60 people in the shelter. Okay, and that's the progressive increase that we would like to make. Now, we plan to maintain 60 for a while, as we monitor the increased costs, as we know everything, cost's going up everywhere, and the management considerations for even more people. We're excited to be at this point. We'll soon be initiating an outreach program with the Sheriff's Department. Purpose of the outreach program is, we know that a lot of people have complained over the years, that the shelter is not just come as you are. No, we know that people can't just roll up to the shelter and come in, okay? And I know, I know that that has left a lot of people in the community feeling as though, well, what good is the shelter? So, a part of our agenda now, as you know, we have the Roseanne Tornator Safe Zone, and she donated $250,000 to build and construct the safe zone. So, what we're now going to do is allow people to stay in the safe zone for up to three days, and that way, they will be able to see people in the shelter, benefiting from the shelter, and then be able to hopefully make a decision as to whether they would like to go into the shelter themselves. And that way, it's sort of that, we, a long time ago, we talked about this sort of an idea of being able to give people a view. We'd actually talked about having an area in the shelter where they'd be able to kind of be a part of the shelter, but not be in the shelter, so they could see the benefits of it. Well, we're now, with the Sheriff's Department, will have a plan in place that will allow them to see it, and we hope make choices, because sometimes, we know people don't want rules and boundaries. Sometimes, when they see the benefits of it, we're hoping that more of them will change and choose, you know, the shelter as opposed to choosing, you know, the life of homelessness. Another thing I wanted to mention was that we hope to go, I won't say in the near future, we're going to stay at 60 for a while, but our goal is, in the future, to go to 70 people. At the end of the day, the shelter, as it's currently constructed, can hold 100 people. As you all know, we took in a grant using county ARCA funds to construct an addition to the shelter. That addition is going very well. It's, it will allow us to be a cold-weather shelter. Another complaint that was made about the shelter was that it wasn't a cold-weather shelter. Well, you can't open up and be all things. You grow and you evolve. So, we're very happy with the fact that we will then be able to be a cold-weather shelter and allow us to take in more people during the cold season. As you all know, Daytona Beach continues to be the greatest user of the shelter. And so, our $400,000 a year is being well-used by people, you know, in Daytona Beach who are homeless. And the other municipalities, they're using it, but not nearly to the degree that we are. We use it 90, 95% of the time, there are people who come from Daytona Beach. And so, that is an update from this month. Excuse me, I will try to keep you all updated, but I want you to be apprised of the fact that I think that your money, the residents of Daytona Beach, your money is currently being well-spent, no matter what people might be saying as it relates to the shelter. The final thing for me tonight relates to this issue of our service as residents in Daytona Beach and as Commissioners. I've been on the Commission, you know, quite a while, but I want to say to you all, you all do some outstanding work. You work very hard for your constituents. And as the mayor, there was a time when I, well, when I first got elected, I felt like my work was six to seven times harder than it was as a Commissioner, because I felt all of the weight of Commission work coming on my table. Well, I can say to a zone, that's a lot less than it was five years ago, six years ago. And what that means is, from my perspective, more, you guys are doing more work. And I don't, now, I'm not saying that you, people weren't working before, but the constituent work is really being done, and I feel it, because I get less of that. I get a lot less of those calls, and, you know, while, you know, I still work two full-time jobs, it's, I'm able to do other things that I wasn't, that was a lot harder to do before. So, I feel you guys putting the burn on, and I just wanted to say, I appreciate what you all are doing, and I think that Daytona Beach is moving in a good direction. To our city manager, yesterday was the first time that I received a complaint, not about you specifically, but it was a complaint about your office. And I wondered, I said, I don't think this person knows the new city manager. But the person said- But the person said that they, we should have a new city manager. But the complaints that they levied were all against, you know, you know, over a, a long period of time. So I just looked at him, and I said, you do know we have a new city manager. So I think the honeymoon is still going. The person said, no, I, I didn't know. I thought you still had that old white guy. This was a white person, by the way. And I said, no, we don't have him. We have the young bald black guy. But at any rate, I just want you to know, I believe that the honeymoon is still continuing. It won't always be, but it's, it's still continuing from the perspective of most of the residents. Think that you and I need to get together in the next week, because we need to come up with a, a review, a procedure for review. And so you and I will need to sit down and discuss that, and then I'll come back and bring that before you all for a discussion, because I want it to be a little bit more thorough and complete and fair, because fair is thorough. When it's not thorough, I think it's unfair. And the same relates with, with you. So with that said, that concludes my remarks. I just want to say I appreciate working with each of you. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
No. I don't have anything.
Mayor, yes, I'd like to give a brief update for the river approach for the Bridgeport Heights subdivision. There may be some comments tonight from citizens, so maybe I can head those off a little bit. So just to remind you all, several months ago, you approved the city attorney to file a dec- declaration action against the property owners who are adjacent to the vacated right-of-way. We had drafted the complaint, and I've been in contact with the property owner's attorney. And over the last several weeks, we've been trying to hammer out details for a settlement agreement. As of today, my discussions with them, we do have a tentative agreement. It generally provides for the property owners to deed the property back to the city with certain restrictions on city development of the property for other purposes. So we'll maintain pedestrian access, we'll maintain a conservation easement over the mangroves, which are protected by state law anyway. So I wanted to let you know that that was in the works. We still have to get a survey done, we still have to finalize the restrictive covenants, but I should think by the next meeting, or maybe the following meeting, we'll have a final agreement.
Thank you for your work, and thank you to our community gadflies. It, it sometimes takes a few bites for people to get things done, but they get done. So I appreciate that and good work on your part. All right. With that said, we look forward to hearing from our residents at this time.
Okay, our first speaker is Lee Kinsner, and on deck is Randy Gray.
Hello, my name is Lee Kinsner, and I live at 2318 South Peninsula Drive. I was going to ask for an update, as we've been asking for a while. Will we have the opportunity to see what that settlement is? I didn't quite catch all of that information.
The settlement will come back to the commission for approval. The public will have the right to comment at that time. I should also add, in the meantime, it's my understanding that the owners are allowing access to that property.
So it kind of goes back to what it was before, then? Everything's the same, right?
That is the intent, yes.
Okay. That sounds pretty good, huh? I'm pretty happy about that. I, I just wish that it wouldn't have taken so long. Thank you.
Well, you know what? I want to say something to that. It did take a long time, but these things happen. And I always say this, when I go to heaven, I'm going to ask the Lord, why did you take so long to send me my wife? So those, sometimes it just takes.
I, I understand, and I'm happy about it, don't get me wrong.
I know.
But it's been a long fight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Randy Gray, and on deck is Anthony, I believe it's Missoula.
Quite as tall as the last guy here. My name is Randy Gray. I live at 2301 South Halifax Drive. No notes, no baskets tonight, just coming freestyle. And, you know, I appreciate you guys going forward with this and seeing what we gave away, but when we gave it away, was there restrictions to giving it away? That's the thing I don't understand. And, you know, now, now all of a sudden, there's negotiations and restrictions to getting, retaining the property back when there wasn't any when we gave it away? So why should there be any coming back? I mean, no one ever abused that property. And, and, and you can see that. If, if you go back through the records, no one ever abused that property to begin with. And, you know, for them to start to dictate how we obtain that property back, I, I don't really feel that that's right, but, you know, we'll, we'll see what comes back. But, you know, no one ever, no one's riding dirt bikes down there. I mean, they call me the mayor of that neighborhood, because I live on the corner, and I can see what goes in and goes out, and, and, you know, everything goes past Randy. So, you know, it's a great neighborhood, and no one has done anything to, you know, restrict their rights or privacy, or, or, and if they did, believe me, the neighborhood would, would come to their defense. And I can sincerely tell you that from all of us. So I thank you all. Ken, you know, and the other thing I think was, you know, the rec center, it's very important to a lot of you, and especially Ruth, I heard you talk about. And it's not that important to me, but I see your passion, and I can appreciate that, I truly can. But that river access was very important to me, and I did not see or feel your compassion towards that, and this is your zone. So I would have liked to see a little more compassion and friendship towards us and our, because I never even got it, none of us even got a phone call back.
I understand what you are saying. However, I did meet privately with some other people. I just, I'm just not a very overt on saying things like that. I prefer to work one-on-one. And I'm sorry I didn't get to you, but I prefer.
Well, I, I'm not sure what anyone, you know, if I, if somebody calls me, I can tell you. If I don't answer or return your phone call, send a posse out, because something happened to me. I can promise you that. Because that, that really, I take that to heart. If you leave me a message, Randy, I need to speak to you, I'm on it. That's just, that's me, that's my personality.
I do not believe I ever got a phone call from you. However, I do return phone calls. Many of my constituents can tell you that, and sometimes the same day.
Okay.
Sometimes a few minutes later.
Right. Okay, very good. Thank you all. Really, truly appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anthony, Anthony Missoula, and on deck is Jennifer, I believe
Good evening. Relatively new to these proceedings. I live at 2250 South Halifax Drive, which is across the street from Randy Gray. So I can agree that he, in fact, is the unofficial mayor of the Bridgeport area, knows everything that's going on. Questions I had from the beginning had to do with the restrictive deed, which was rescinded. I don't know how a restrictive deed can be rescinded without any real community input, without any, any requests for variances from the people who live in the area. I'm pleased that you're taking the right path at this point, but like Randy, I question why there's even negotiations, or there's a need for an agreement. To me, it seems pretty straightforward. City made a mistake, corrected the mistake, and we move on. So I'm hoping whatever settlement there is, is just a settlement in word only and not any remuneration involved, because I don't feel there should be. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your work.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Isay, Koazlowski? Close enough, okay. And on deck is John Nicholson. Sorry about that.
Hello, everybody. Thank you all for coming down, for looking at the property, for taking the initiative of, of speaking with us for a while. You guys had to put up with a lot, and I know our talks were very long. Just like Randy and everybody else, I don't understand the restrictions. It's very upsetting, because the last meeting, I mean, everybody was, let's get it back, let's do this. The very next day, said homeowner to the right is flipping off my neighbor, like literally in her driveway, flipping her off, because, you know, they watch the meetings, they know what's going on, their lawyers are telling them what's going on. This has become to the point where you feel so uncomfortable going down there because of the animosity between them, because we are fighting for our rights to get our land back. This hasn't been nice, this hasn't been, you see Randy and everybody, he, he is more than our mayor. He is, he's our block leader. Everything goes through, you know, we know everything. Just to see everything that's happening, for them to say, we have pictures, we have this, I have pictures, I have texts, they're all very negative. This is not a community getting their land back. It's the restrictions. I, I, I'm shaking, I'm so upset. They're not being nice. Everybody in our neighborhood is nice. We're all friends, we all have picnics outside and barbecues. We are a community. This is the first place I've ever lived where I can truly say, I love all my neighbors. We all get along, we're all friends, our kids play outside together. You know, it's, their children come down and buy drugs 15 foot in front of my house, where I'm having to send pictures to them and say, please stop this. You know, where they're apologizing because they know it's not right. It has become a volatile situation. Negotiations, great, you can try to negotiate, but the animosity that they are throwing back at us for fighting this, it's sad. This was somebody we thought was our friend when they moved in, they were nice, they went to the bars, they drank together, our husbands were friends, to turn around and, oh, by the way, you can't come onto the property, well, you can come onto our property, 15 foot of it's ours, but the other 15 foot belongs to them, you can walk on this side. To the point where it's, their kids throwing their hands up in the air as you ask them to walk in box.
Thank you, ma'am, your time's up.
My time's up. Thank you for hearing me.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
As John comes, I think we have to remember what he said tonight. This is two parties that are now working together. So whatever the issues have been in the past, let's now all move towards, you know, being that community that you, you were before. Because what he's illustrated tonight is radically different than what it could be. And that may not be something that you had to pay for, but because of the decision that this commission made, this community may have had to pay for it. So as it stands, and I'm not going to speak to what is to come, I want to wait and allow that to happen, but I think moving forward, we all need to bring the tone down towards being successful moving forward. Thanks, John.
John Nicholson, 413 North Cranby Avenue. With regard to putting in the sidewalks, it is generally the property owner's responsibility to put in the sidewalk. So I'm asking that you put a lien when we put these sidewalks in, because it could happen in the future. So if you, if you do this now, then everybody else can say, well, you did it for somebody else. It is a property owner's responsibility, so I ask that you put a lien on that sidewalk cost. Secondly, I have a, or had a lady stop by the house, she's starting a petition for the short-term rentals in north of Main Street. So I explained to her, there's south of Main Street, which is the city of Daytona, the old city of Daytona Beach, and the north end is the city of Seabreeze, we're in Seabreeze. And the neighbors are different, and she understands that now. And I'm asking that you might, as a compromise, put in a bed and breakfast for us, because the homes are so much bigger, but at least we have somebody living in the house rather than a party place and things of that nature. Third, appearance. Again, the county spoke about beachside and its importance, it came up at another meeting. We've been neglected for 12 years. Jim gave up on the beachside, there are things that we needed that we didn't have, and it's been 12 years of neglect. It's time to go through and fix what we haven't fixed for 12 years and spend some money there. Secondly, they're redoing roads. I mean, Oak Ridge was just done. If you go over Oak Ridge, there's like 50 of these huge yellow signs saying that there's some, a pedestrian crossing. There's four per block. It's extremely ugly, all right? So there's also on, on A1A, there's all these cones things so that people can't make a U-turn. I know they're for safety, they want to put in these ballards. You can't have an ugly neighborhood, an ugly beachside, because it's safe. There's, there's got to be a balance where appearance has to mean something. Rezoning. We've never been told exactly why you can't do what everybody else is doing. If the 16 cities can do it in time, if the county can do it in time, and the school board has done it, everybody has done it but us. All right? And there are going to be 10,000 to 15,000 people in this election will not be able to vote in this election. And then if they don't have their representative, because the bounty's going to change. So there's 5, 6,000 people in Stacy's zone that should be voting for Ken, or for Quanita, or for Dinet. They're not going to be able to vote. So I'm asking you to reconsider and at least explain to why these people are stupid to know what, that the zones are going to be changed. Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to address a few things he said. First of all, the sidewalks, if I'm correct, Mr. Jagger, is not the responsibility of the property owner. It would be through our land development code, it'd be the responsibility of the developer, correct?
Well, they were grandfathered in his developments, and if I understand what Andy said earlier, and I haven't talked to Andy, is that we would get a right-of-entry onto that private property and, and build that sidewalk on their behalf. There's really no mechanism to lien the property. If I got that right, Andy, you can just nod. So generally, the way it's working, it's not part of, it's private right-of-way, right? It's not public right-of-way. It is public right-of-way?
Okay, what about the vac-
So if it is public right-of-way, we could build, obviously, the sidewalk within the public right-of-way. It's our property, it's the city's property, so there'd be no lien on the private property.
Correct. Okay. And the next question I have about the redistricting, I think you were told on WNDB, we are not the only municipality that did not redistrict. I talked to Trey, too. Thank you.
It's only one.
Okay, but you up there said none.
Stop saying none.
You did say none. Do you, I mean, am I correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
I just want to say with the record that Derrick Picha is the best city manager we've ever had here in our city, and Jim Chisholm was the worst. So he took us out of the meeting and let us speak after the meeting was adjourned. And that is disrespect to the residents of this city. Okay, the statement that you made tonight here, Derrick Henry, Mayor, you can fool some of the people some of the time, but you cannot fool all the people all the time. That statement is not true about these constituents being represented. We have no representation in my zone. I had a meeting with Ms. Reeves some two years ago, she didn't show, and she didn't call, but I got a, it's on social media, too, the clip that Ken Strickland took when he took us out the meeting. He taped it anyway, and the people can see it. I have over 5,000 people on one social media, 24,500 on LinkedIn, another social media. I have Ken Strickland, I have the city manager, and Stacy can too, on my social media where I put that video. So I just want the people to see what's going on here, because you're making false statements here, that these people are representing us. I can't get a meeting with you, I can't get one with her. I am the one who advocated for a special election for you to get in the very seat and title that you have today. Norma Bland would have been here. I made that happen, and Genesis Robinson is telling everybody about it. So we don't want these false statements made, that these people are accessible when they're not. So they are here to serve the people, they're getting paid to do that. They're getting paid to do that and that's what they need to do. At the last city commission meeting, when we was talking about the Orange Avenue building, the rec center, you made a statement that you had four votes. You did not have four votes. When the vote was taken, there were seven votes. You don't need to make statements that's not true before something happened. And that's very unprofessional and disrespectful, the way you have her to read the statement to us about respecting everybody. You need to respect our constituents. We are paying your salary and we, you're here to do the people's work and we need you to do that. The meeting that she didn't show up, she said, let's set up another meeting and she did. So today, I'd like to commend Billy Wheeler. I had lunch with her today at Cracker Barrel. She represents District Two. She's doing outstanding work. She makes things happen. She's been there for two terms and I got her elected. But she has been accessible to all of her constituents. So this is a great woman and I give her the highest praise. I supported her and I supported Josh Wagner and they won. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh Wagner and Billy Wheeler. Fantastic public servants.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is Patricia Hurd.
Once again, it's Frederick Brown, 15 Crescent Ridge. There are several items I want to talk about this evening. Of course, the number one thing that I brought up for the past two years has been the land acquisition. And as you said, we should be joyful that it's happening. Unfortunately, it's not exactly happening the way it should have been happening all along. I brought up over this past two years, several reasons why this whole action should have never gone as far as it did. There were some problems and, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the fact that you stated earlier, we learn along the way. I know Commissioner May, if she's still on the phone, brought up the concept, the fact that nobody was notified. And so now it says you have to notify people within 150 feet. I would like to see...
I'm actually here.
Oh, good.
I haven't gone anywhere. I'm here. Go ahead.
Anyway, and I appreciate, you know, the work was done to change that. Because I met Mayor Gray from Bridgeport Heights via social media when nobody knew that this thing had been just basically ripped out from under the, under the feet of the residents. Nothing was mentioned about it. It was never published anywhere. And as I had pointed out, there were some mistakes made by the staff in the fact that it did conflict with the comprehensive city plan. There was not due diligence in, in doing that. The other thing was, the application was false. Those are all legal grounds for this whole thing being dropped to begin with. Well, all that aside, we're now negotiating to get it back. And I don't agree, as, as Jen said, I don't agree with that. The only damage, and as Randy had stated, the only damage has been on the property is by the new owners, the destruction of the mangroves. There've been some other issues in the neighborhood, as Jen has pointed out and other people have pointed out as well. But yes, we're happy we're going to get the land back. I don't think those restrictions belong there. I would like to see the alleged agreement be made public to us, the residents, who are the ones that actually own the property, before it's decided on. As you know, as we all know, your decisions on how to vote are typically made in the management meeting before the city commission meeting. I'd like to see it before you guys decide so that we can at least talk about it and comment on, yeah, that's acceptable, that's not acceptable.
That ain't true.
We don't ever seem to get that opportunity.
That's all.
Anyway, there's several other things I wanted to talk about. The safety, again, I'll post that in there. There's a couple of things I want to talk about. Affordable housing. I hope to meet with you in person about that because I do believe there is an excellent solution to solving that problem. One of the other things, oh, I wanted to compliment also, Mr. Mackman didn't want to take credit for it, but the ligatures are finally gone from the city commission meetings. Now, we are up to February, okay? So I do have the February meetings, but I would like to see him get a little closer to the meeting so that I can actually reference him. I have two last things. I'm going to cut off on time. The MLK tree up front. Arbor funds for that, it's sad. It's a really, about, do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and Commissioner, that river approach agreement will be published with the agenda as every agreement is.
Hello, Ms. Hurd.
Good evening again. 822 Vernon Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. Good evening. As the Juneteenth Festival Committee member, I am very proud to announce that the Juneteenth Celebration in the city of Daytona Beach is the largest and the oldest Juneteenth Celebration in the state of Florida and has been for 23 years. On Saturday, June 18th, we are expecting a crowd of over 6,000 people at the festival at the Midtown Cultural and Educational Center and Sapper Street Park and the Juneteenth Banquet, which will be held again at Emma Riddle, Aronautica University. On Thursday evening, June 16th, will be sold out. So get your tickets soon. On behalf of the Juneteenth Committee, we are requesting that each of the city officials support the Juneteenth Community Festival with a sponsorship. Your support is vital to the success of the Juneteenth activities. We are very proud that the Juneteenth Festival and banquet are in Commissioner Paula Reed's zone. We look forward to seeing everyone at this year's events. If you have any questions, I'm sure you have information to reach us. Thank you.
Is this the purpose of this? Have you, we've, we've always been major supporters of the festival. So have you looked at this and what's...
You all approved in your budget. It's not true. And we will, I'll send it, I'll email to you, but I think she's requesting for individual commissioners as well. But I'll send a list of what we've sponsored.
Okay.
Yes, we are looking at individual, that $250,000, you know.
Thank you.
Or any other money you might have.
Thank you. Your time has...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next speaker is, I believe it's Erwin White and on deck is Ann Ruby. Okay. Our next speaker is Ann Ruby and on deck is Steve Miller.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I just want to piggyback on what Attorney Jagger said. One of my favorite activities on Friday afternoon is opening my email the Fridays before the commission meeting and getting a link to the commission agenda. And in that link and the agenda, there's links to all the backup documentation. So the people who are so concerned about the right-of-way movement should sign up to get the emails and then they can go and look at the agreement the Friday before the commission meeting. Because it's a great activity. So I would urge them to take advantage of that opportunity because I'm assuming that's where that agreement will appear.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, yeah, it will be available. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew the how and the when of being able to get it. Thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is Stephen Miller.
My name is Steve Miller, 383 Walnut Street, beautiful Daytona Beach, Florida. Couple comments tonight. By the way, old bald-headed city manager.
I'm young.
Okay. I was, I wanted to speak about the Joe Harris Park, the playground equipment. We had a Bike Week a couple of months ago, a week ago, whatever. We got Oktoberfest coming. And one of the things that was brought to my attention, and I wasn't aware of it, that the playground equipment at that park is for five and up. Nothing for smaller kids. We got kids that come here with their parents and absolutely nothing to do. So I would, we would really love to request that we have some equipment out there for kids five and under. In fact, I talked to quite a number of the residents on Walnut Street. In fact, right on the corner, the Andersons, she was there at that home for about 55 years. Her son said to me that he grew up, crossed the street from that park and they always had playground equipment for smaller kids. So if we can, can we please look into that one? And something else, we have a gentleman from our community and I think he should be the citizen of the year, Ted Hrdowski. You know, doing, we actually have an individual who go around mowing lots. Cole actually called him and told him to go mow the lots. And it would be great for you guys to make a resolution, pass it, to give him a nice plight. He truly deserves it. He is really special. And not only that, on special events, they feed the policemen and, and the firefighters and, and all city employees. Mr. Mayor, I think you're doing a fantastic job, sir. You are the bum.com. I think we have the best mayor on the planet. And, and I thought I was the only one that was a mayor of an area, but I see that there's somebody else too. So Big John called me the mayor of Midtown. But no disrespect to you, sir. You're truly our mayor and we love you and we appreciate you. And thank you and I love this city. And I also suggest that we continue to pray for this city. I think we have 100 churches in the Midtown area. We need to send something to them and say, keep you guys lifted up. In fact, the word of God tells us that we should pray for our leaders. And I pray for this city. I pray for the leadership here. And again, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Before we hit the gal, does Ted more decade, does he do that through his own, on his own initiative or is it through the beachside?
He does it through Lady of Lords. Hello. He does it through Lady of Lords and he has a team of people he works with. No, we, it's Commissioner May, sorry. And he's worked with Captain Lee quite often. And I think that he's a pretty fantastic human being. So I'm working on something for local residents who do outstanding work throughout the community. But he's definitely one of them.
Okay. In addition, is there anything through beachside or through the neighborhood? Association, there's nothing else? There is?
The driving force is...
Okay.
He's the effort for all of the activities for Ladies of Lords to clean up, even after we have our Neighborhood Watch meetings there. He cleans up the facilities and he go above and beyond the call of duty. And we have a saying now, let's not overwork Ted. That's what they say now. But he definitely deserved to be recognized by this city.
No doubt. And I'll make sure that happens.
He, he also coordinates all the stuff for the cooking that gets done by Lady of Lords and the veterans outreach through Our Lady of Lords for the police department and the, the workers, you know, the, the, over at the precinct during Bike Week. There will be over at the Ocean Center, starting on Friday morning, in case the event does come on. It's all planned to do the cooking and everything. But the police department's providing the food and stuff this time, not just the, the fund that's raised through Beachside Neighborhood Watch and the church.
Okay. Great.
And he also is going to do the grand opening for our veteran museum as well.
Wow. Okay. This guy is a wheel. Okay. All right. Well, I'll be doing something special for Ted from the mayor's office based on community. It's very special.